Good evening and welcome to the Portsmouth School Board, Tuesday, July 13th, the year 2003, at the Portsmouth Municipal Complex in the Portsmouth City Hall. Is there a, I'll ask the superintendent for the roll call, please.
Raymond Bowles. Roseanne Vazella Clark.
Here.
Nancy Nobeling Claybird.
Here.
Nancy Craig. Clay Haywood.
Here.
John Lyons.
Here.
Charles Vaughn.
Here.
Ann Walker.
Here.
Kent LaPage.
Here.
Andrew Canacci.
Here.
Ann Mayer. Rich Carlson.
I'm going to ask that we rise for a moment of silent reflection and keep those in mind that are less fortunate and those that are sick and ill in our community at this time. Also, I'm going to ask that Roseanne Vazella Clark lead us in the pledge allegiance to the flag after a moment of silent reflection. Thank you.
At pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Item two, we have the secretary's report of June 23rd, the year 2004, to be approved. Is there a motion?
No move.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Under correspondence, you had one that was in your packet from Linda files that I read, and then we have a couple that are in your packet this evening. Dear Dr. Tracy, Dr. Lister, and school board members, thank you so much for a wonderful retirement reception held recently at the high school. It was a unique opportunity to be able to chat with many of you whom I knew and others whom I did not know. The hors d'oeuvres were delicious and the presentation of the beautiful plaques was a very touching and emotional time. Also, thank you for your lovely corsages and sending the photographers, sending the photographies were taken during the evening event. I certainly appreciate the time and energy that went into making a very special evening for all of us. Sincerely, Linda Files.
Linda Tellis.
I'm sorry.
Linda Tellis.
Mr. Chairman, I move that this be placed on file with a thank you to Linda Tellis for her note.
It's moved, moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second to accept Linda Tellis's letter of appreciation. All those in favor?
Aye.
I asked also for a, I thought that was very nice of Linda, a brief thank you note from the superintendent.
Thank you. It's always well received to be thanked for that, but we do. In your packets tonight, there's a letter from the Friends Project to receive, July 9th, 2004. The trip to Quebec was a huge success, and thank you very much for giving us permission to go to the Eiffel Tree of Life. The young woman on the trip had a wonderful time while experiencing many new things. These types of experiences are very important for young people to have. They will remember this trip for years to come. We want to pass on to you some lessons learned from the road and some delicious maple candy that we have picked up in old Quebec. We have also included some pictures of our trip. Sincerely, Heidi Chase, Christine Anderson, Mylene Newton-Yein, Mary Ann McGinnis, Brittany Jackson, Amanda Fawcett. These are the candies, and I grabbed two, and then it's up to you guys.
One, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I think, yeah. Let me see, now that Mr. Vaughn made a comment, the candies will go this way on the table.
They are delicious, though, the tests, right?
Yeah, I was going to say they were open, Nancy. And then I have the pictures, I have the pictures, oh, the pictures right here, and I took a chance to look at them, and the pictures will go that way, and they are fun-filled pictures, and I appreciate it. There is an attachment to this, let me read it as you grab the candies and look at the pictures. A trip to Quebec, lessons learned from the road, the Portsmouth route. We learned that there were more others to consider other than ourselves. We learned to laugh at our mistakes, and we learned to get over our problems. We learned to work with other people we did not know. We learned to manage our money. We really liked hanging with the crew. We think that this trip was a learning experience, and we'd go again if offered. We've made friends here in the Eiffel Tree of Life. Linda is an awesome lady. She treated us very kindly. Linda showed us a great time in Canada. We all enjoyed the Elf Story Show in the town of Quebec. Shopping downtown was awesome. We really enjoyed Canada. Sightseeing was really fun. The kids were really nice. They treated us really nicely. At times, we argued, but we just forgot about it and really became close. We learned that the trip was a great idea for us to really never have been out of the U.S. It was really was a great, great experience. We loved the horse and buggy ride. It was a beautiful to go down touring downtown Quebec. A guy was really nice man named Jacques. He was a gentleman. At night, the town lights looked dazzling. They were very pretty. We personally think Linda was a great, great woman and fabulous tour guide. The youth hostel was a great place. The K.O.A. campground was also fun. Swimming was awesome. Overall, we love Canada. Favorites. Christine, I loved the horse and buggy ride and the cruise, the youth hostel. It was a good trip, it was a great, it was great. Amanda, I enjoyed, I enjoyed being at the youth hostel and its location. I've enjoyed walking tours because it gave us a tour of the city, and I enjoyed the silly pig fest. Brittany, I enjoyed the youth hostel. I also enjoyed the K.O.A. because of the pool. I enjoyed the horse and the cruise and the waterfall. I got my face of fears. The Elf Show was fun also. Mary Ann, I liked seeing the mansion on the hill. I enjoyed hanging out with my friends. I liked the Elf Show. Meline, I enjoyed the youth hostel. I also liked shopping and sightseeing. I liked the cruise and the Elf Show and the horse and buggy ride. Touring town was very pretty. The trip was a great experience. I liked all the other people. Heidi, I liked the beautiful streets of old Quebec. I loved the youth hostel. It was great. I liked the people. I liked the Elf Show and shopping. It was a great trip for all of us. And again, that was submitted from the Friends Project. Is there a motion to accept and put on file?
No move.
Second.
Move in second, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all. Is there any other correspondence to be given to us, Dr. Tracy? Oops, I apologize. Okay, okay. Under correspondence to Lionel Tracy Bob Lister and Forest Ransdel from Caffey-Meterville, environmental chip is also a thank you letter. I apologize, I didn't see it in here. Thank you very, very much for allowing us to go to Belize. The trip was absolutely fabulous. I would like to request permission to take in my environmental club to Italy in April of 2005. We'd like to go for eight days. Two of the days would be in Florence, Siena. Four of the days would be Spencioni Foundation Villa in Tuscany, w.spencioni.org, and the last two days would be in Rome. I hope that with your permission, I may present the proposal to the Portsmouth Board in August. I will have more information on the formal itinerary at that time. Because we will be doing cultural things as we, as well as scientific activities, I will not be offering credits to the students for this trip. Additionally, I have told the students that I have required each student to be in the company of a parent. I share this with the parents of my club students, and it received enthusiastic support. Frankly, I am concerned about the availability of alcohol in Italy. Oh, I am so concerned that a naive girl will jump on the Vespa and ride off into the sunset with some guy named Giadio.
Guido.
Guido. Please let me know what you think. Hey, I had the French one, I had Jacques earlier. Is there a motion to accept that and place on file?
No move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This is a reminder that this Friday, Prescott Park's art festival, please be reminded that the school board is collecting donations at Prescott Park on Friday, July 16th, 2004. Meet at the merchandise booth near the concession stand at 5:45. We should be finished collecting at 8:00 P.M. Reserved seating will be available for those who want to stay to watch the performance. That's from Patty as a reminder. And like I said, I was able to do this Friday, so I'm sure it's going to pour because that's happened to me every single time I've been able to do it. So, any other correspondence at this time? That will move us to public commentary session. We have nobody signed up for the public commentary. Adam, I will allow it. Please state your name and address for the.
Adam Irish, 137 Langue Road, Ryan, New Hampshire. I was bad, I got through too late to sign up for the commentary, but thank you. I wanted to come here, obviously, to speak on behalf of my little project of the later start. And originally, during the presentation, I asked the board to endorse the concept of having later starts. Just almost ignore the logistical factor for a few minutes and just say, we like the idea, we think it'll be good for our schools. Yes, the bus situation is a huge problem, it could cost lots of money, but I think it really is just a matter of someone sitting down and figuring it out. It's simply a problem that can be worked out. So, I would urge the board to consider doing that same motion again, and I would appreciate your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Adam. That brings us to any, there is no other for the public commentary that I would allow at this time. Is there any else, anybody else that would wish to speak? Seeing nobody else, that brings us to Arts Speaks. Dr. Tracy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chris Dwyer originally had planned to address the board to talk about Arts Speak. The Arts Speak Committee came out of the master plan for this city when they adopted the Arts and Culture Plan, and so we'd like to invite her to come back at another time. But some of the issues that this nonprofit group intends to address are public arts, artist work, and spaces, and artist housing, and Chris Dwyer at some point would like to just address the school board and talk about what opportunities there are for this school district to participate in this Arts Speak, which is a part of the Arts and Culture Plan and the master plan. So if we could reschedule that, we'd appreciate it.
Certainly.
No move.
We reschedule at the convenience of both the board and the individual speaker. We'll allow the superintendent, any discussions? Seeing none. Recognition of groups or staff or students. Dr. Tracy, anything tonight?
Nothing on the agenda.
Okay, that brings us to item five, under Personnel. And I have one personnel item tonight. And then it will be moved to Dr. Tracy for professional resignations, professional nominations, coaching, and also a finalization of the superintendent's evaluation. Date of July 13th, 2004. Dear Chairman LaPage, it is with mixed emotions that I write this letter to relinquish my position as a member of the Portsmouth School Board. As of midnight, July 13th, 2004, I wish to step down from the board to pursue a career opportunity within the Portsmouth school system. I would like to take this opportunity to thank you for helping me to gain valuable experience and insight into the school system. It has been a great honor to serve on the board. I look forward to meeting the needs of the students in a more direct manner. Thank you again for your friendship, guidance, and support. Sincerely, Roseanne Vazella Clark. Is there a motion to accept?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I might, with deep regret, I move the resignation of Vazella Clark for, from the school board.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved and seconded to accept the resignation of Roseanne Vazella Clark from the board at midnight tonight, July 13th, the year 2004. Discussion. Nancy.
I would just like to thank Roseanne for being with us and for being such a caring and effective board member, and we wish her the best of luck in the road that she wants to travel now, and we'll miss you, Roseanne. You've been wonderful, and we will really miss you. Thank you for all you've given us.
I too wish to thank you, Roseanne. Short, but an outstanding time on the board, and appreciate what you have done for the people in Portsmouth.
Thank you very much.
It's moved in seconded. This is policy of nature, so it will be a roll call. Roseanne Vazella Clark.
I'm staying.
Nancy Nobeling Claybird.
Yes.
Nancy Craig, isn't he, excuse me. Clay Haywood.
Yes.
John Lyons.
I'll miss my friend and colleague, but vote yes.
Charles Vaughn.
I too will miss a friend and colleague, yes.
Ann Walker. Kent LaPage.
Yes, with great regret, as a childhood friend and member of this school board, I will deeply miss. Thank you.
Passes unanimously. We hope the best for you, Roseanne, in your pursuits.
Thank you very much.
That brings us to Dr. Tracy, to the professional resignations at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a number of personnel decisions for you this evening. The first one does not appear on your agenda, but I did have a request for a leave of absence, which is in your packet. Susan Carter is requesting an unpaid leave of absence for the 2004-2005 school year, and I would ask you to approve that, please.
No move. Moved in seconded. All those in favor, is there a second?
Second.
All right. Give it to Lyons, he needs it. Moved in second by John Lyons. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
I do have one resignation. Tracy A. Gilroy is resigning her position as a science teacher at Portsmouth High School. She'll be relocating out of state.
No move.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
I have some professional nominations for you. First of all, two teachers that I would like to nominate to add to our list that I gave you in March, which included 278 professional staff, would be Nancy Pollack and Christine Wade. Nancy Pollack is an art teacher at the Portsmouth Middle School. Christine Wade is a math teacher at the high school.
No move.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes.
In your packet, you have Kristen O'Connor, who would be an after-school coordinator at the Portsmouth Middle School. This is the second year of this program, which actually thrived last year under Maureen Callahan, who had to leave and move out of state, but we feel we've got a good candidate who's actually been in the system for us for three years as a paraprofessional at the middle school in the kids program.
No move.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Discussion.
Chairman?
Yes.
I just want to note, Portsmouth resident, which is consistent with the superintendent's efforts to continue to find folks who live in our community and in the area to work in our school, which is a wonderful thing.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
I'd like to nominate Brian Macio to fill a leave of absence position in the past program, and you have his credentials in front of you.
No move.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
Principal Robin Burdick will have her leadership skills challenged this year, as she has the most vacancies in the district for some reason, but we know she's up to it. I want to start with Jennifer Martin, who would, I would nominate as a elementary teacher at the Little Harbor School.
No move.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
Another elementary vacancy at the Little Harbor School. I'd like to nominate Britt Holmes.
No move.
Second.
Moved in second. Discussion. No discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
Another nomination at the Little Harbor School, Ellen McCallister Flack, who has lots of experience and certainly will be a welcome addition as Robin tries to mentor these young teachers.
No move.
Second.
Moved in second. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
I'd like to also nominate Nicole Smith for an elementary position at the Little Harbor School.
No move.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
A young lady who was actually Teacher of the Year in the State of Maine in music. I'd like to nominate Gina Branigan for the Little Harbor Music Position.
No move.
Second.
Moved in seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
Another experienced teacher that will certainly be helping Robin along the way is Tess Hall. I'd like to nominate her for an elementary position at the Little Harbor School.
No move.
Second.
Moved in seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
Next would be a coaching nomination after an extensive search and a committee at the high school, and also approval of our school board athletic committee. I'd like to nominate Matt Mitchell for the Boys Varsity Basketball Position at the high school. Matt is an outstanding teacher for us at the middle school, and he also has filled in that athletic director's gap at the middle school and has done an outstanding job. Matt Mitchell for Boys Varsity Basketball.
No move.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Discussion. No discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman? Yes. I just wanted to comment that the folks at home don't have the opportunity to look at the materials and the background on the candidates that the superintendent has presented to us tonight. They're outstanding, highly qualified, wonderful educators, and the proof of the pudding is in the eating, and if anybody questions that the Portsmouth school system has the highest reputation, not only in the area, but I think regionally and perhaps nationwide, to attract these kind of candidates, all they have to do is look at the quality of the folks that we have accepted as new educators in the system. So, thank you, Dr. Tracy, for recommending these candidates to us, and I want to thank all of the administrators in the district, and the teachers, and the students who've maintained the quality of our system.
Thank you, John. Mr. Vaughn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, to the public, we reviewed these with the superintendent in great detail before we came here. Plus the fact that I'm sure that the superintendent would be more than pleased if anybody in the public would like to see the credentials, that they would be available, the same paperwork that we reviewed and looked at and passed on. So, anybody in the public who wonders why this went so quickly, it didn't really go quickly. We spent at least two hours reviewing these people to make sure that the superintendent had his done his job, which he had.
Thank you, Charlie. Any other discussions in regards to personnel? If not, at this time, we will have a conclusion. This is not a, this is a oral evaluation on the superintendent. It will be in writing tomorrow afternoon because we just wrapped up. Let me please explain the procedure of how this board approaches the superintendent's evaluation. The superintendent's evaluation is an ongoing evaluation, but every April, actually in February, I hand out evaluation forms for each board member to participate in. The members have the right, or not the right, to, they can sign their names if they wish or wish not. Unfortunately, this year, we normally would wrap up around the end of April 1st of May, but due to the budget issues that hit us at that same time, we decided to delay this until this evening in regards to our evaluation. And again, I apologize both to the press, and I apologize to the public that this is not in writing, but sometime tomorrow, I will finish up the written, because it's from our notes this evening with Patty, and have it ready for the press so that it will be formally in writing. I will read our evaluation orally at this time, but I would also like to start off that somewhere on this table, or maybe in the other room, we discussed this evening what it is to be a superintendent in the United States, probably one of the most difficult CEO positions that one can undertake, and you're not paid that of what a CEO would have with the same amount of employees. The example that's given in the National School Boards Association Journal talks about many things in superintendents, but they use the example of the Dade County Superintendent in Florida, where he will begin with a salary starting at $460,000, and by his sixth year will probably be up to about $580,000. And in fact, that this wasn't enough for them, that many business owners got together and were willing to put up an additional $240,000 to seduce the superintendent into their district. Now, we're not buying Lionel a house, and, you know, finances are tight in the city, but what we can do is work with our superintendent for the things that have gone extremely well this year, and then also create new paths that we wish to see the superintendent embark on in the next year. During this time period of this year, with little hesitation from the administration's office and a great deal of work from the faculty at the Portsmouth High School, we made the single largest move this school district has ever made. The principals at the high school, under the direction of Forrest Ransdel, moved literally the whole school over February vacation, and then there was a little blip in the screen. We still had to use the old building until it was quite ready. This is not done in a vacuum. It's done with great coordination from the conductor at the top of the food chain here. And Lionel was able to entrust with the people that he has to make this move, make those adjustments with little to no educational loss at that time. Also, it should be noted that there were many faculty changes due to the fiscal zero budget that we were faced in the '03-'04 budget year, and doing this, little to no child programming was lost, with the exception of the K through six Spanish program, the loss of an athletic director, and the business classes, which we were able to adjust and give other duties to other ways. So it's not that things were easy at all this year for Dr. Tracy and the people that work for Dr. Tracy. As I go around the state and as I go around the country, I always emphasize it's only one person. We have the, we have the luxury of only having to work with one person on the board, and that is Dr. Tracy. We may watch, we may make comments, we may make suggestions, we may develop policy statements from what we do as a school board, but we must and always funnel it through the superintendent. That is the function of a board, and that is how a board works most properly. Under this year's setup, Dr. Tracy has a willingness to openly communicate with the parents on student issues and their outcomes. Number two, as superintendent, he's highly, he is, he was highly challenged to find quality and creative ways to deal with the financial crisis that we have gone through in the '03- '04 budget. That, as I said, having to eliminate the business program and yet work to find business classes outside of the Portsmouth school system. He was creative, ingenious in many ways to make sure students did not lose out. He makes appropriate recommendations for educational staffs and policies. He allows the staff to work and develop their policies internally and then be able to make those recommendations back to us as a board as they progress. Fourth, proactive with the city and surrounding community. He's not a gentleman, nor a person that I have seen in any school system in the recent that attends more. that attends more activities, anywhere from being a member of the Portsmouth Rotary to attending countless numbers of athletic programs, even though I know that's a passion that he just loves athletics and he goes to, to the plays, to parent teachers' meetings, to SAU fifty meetings in Rye, Greenland, Newcastle and Newington, making sure that we are well representative, represented. Five, implementing educational programs that, which will permit children to develop his or her highest potential being a, a, um, child-centered educator. It is a thing that he, uh, i- is proud of and one that he continually puts back in front of us. Uh, along with that, he is, is working and counting the practice of looking for, as, as John just said recently, for members of the community that have either gone to the Portsmouth School System or live in the Portsmouth area and hiring individuals that are highly, highly qualified. We have highly, highly qualified individuals in this city and the surrounding towns that have been going elsewhere, usually for financial. Now, our financial picture has not gotten greatly improved, but they have wanted to come and work with this school system due to the guidance of the superintendent and what he has been able to create here. We have, with the superintendent, has recently been able to up the lower end of the teacher salary scale, meaning that the new coming teachers that have been coming on board have been able to at least be somewhat in the same market. And that was done during the negotiations with the teachers' union and Dr. Tracy and the committee that worked with that. And that was no small accomplishment during one of the worst fiscal, uh, crises that this city has been through. Where we'd like to see the next year go is that Dr. Tracy be alert to ever-changing budget and the mandates coming both down from the state and the federal level. As much as we are divvying out money, mandates are still coming down that we must meet and have an obligation to. So at this time, we would like to keep him, make sure that he's alert and keeps this board alert to what financial issues and mandates may affect us. Two, regarding professional staff, give the board an opportunity to discuss personnel, personnel and the positions that they are filling. As, uh, as Mr. Vaughn pointed out momentarily ago, we've had the practice, but it got off the practice a little bit, where prior to the board meetings, because these are personnel issues and under RSA ninety-three A colon C two, we are able to discuss this prior to bringing it to the public. That allows the superintendent and the board to have better communication skills knowing why we are hiring certain people. And as John Lyons pointed out, those, uh, qualifications are always available to the public, but we wish to now get back into that practice so that we know who's coming and who's going and why. Three, delegating more authority and encouraging authority to the school district administrators, but still supervising those persons, making sure that the outcomes are what that, that both the community and this board look forward to. Again, I apologize that we do not have a written form, but we finished up this evening just prior to this meeting. We will have that cleaned up and out to you, uh, tomorrow by noon time. And again, if there's any board members that wish to cover anything that I, uh, did not, please feel free at this time. But Dr. Tracy, we thank you for another outstanding year, a year that showed us many challenges, both financially and, as I said, in logistic moving of the high school. We appreciate your work.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The continued efforts on behalf of our children.
Any other discussion in regards to the superintendent's evaluation? Seeing none. We'll move to item six, community, uh, community, yeah. Committee reports, joint billing. Do you know what? Besides the N and I, everybody, oh, John, you know, John came through the other night. Um, Peter's not here this evening, so I'll try to do the, uh, these. Remember, these are the preliminary, uh, JBC reports, joint billing, uh, reports. They have not gone to the, uh, Joint Building Committee to be approved, but because we won't meet until next week, I believe it is, um, I'll just go over it. Uh, Portsmouth, uh, High School Project Status, uh, as you know, Billy D gives us an, uh, a great detail of where we are, things are moving, uh, we are ahead in some stuff. Uh, it, we are fully occupied in the new side of the building, uh, and they are continuing to do some work improvement or some areas that needed, uh, to be re-looked at under, which is the punch list items that we're looking at. Uh, adjustment of the HVAC controls are minimal, uh, which is really good because it takes about two years to get the HVAC, uh, control so that both the, uh, heat and air cooling system are working properly, but, uh, we're doing very well, uh, so that there's a balance of this. And, you know, if, if anybody has had the opportunity during the summer here, even though we're having a very good summer, uh, if you go in there on one of the hot, muggy days, you will see that we can have a better work environment because, uh, we're not having to run either little individual air conditioners, fans, and people having to take breaks because the building is extremely workable. So again, um, they are correcting some minor problems they have had with that. The existing buil- building demolition is ongoing and since this report is extremely fast going down, if you haven't taken a chance, the old building has, uh, little left of what it was. Masonery work for the exterior dining walls has begun. As a matter of fact, it went by, uh, last evening. And, um, we are ahead on this. Uh, we probably will not be able to serve the meals there, but the students will be able to use the dining area as early as September if all keeps going well. Uh, the kitchen supplies and so forth, probably more like a December timeline or it may be any luck a little sooner than that, but it is somewhere between, uh, December and January is where it's scheduled anyway. Uh, demolition work area started in the gym area. The exterior walls for the new weight room have been, uh, completed. Uh, you know, if you've been in, uh, there's been a lot of work going on in the gym and yet protecting the floor and the structure of that is, uh, ongoing also. Commissioning continues on the building, providing a very positive result. Commissioning is, as you may know, is the ability to make sure that areas that are supposed to be functional are functional, such as electrical, the HVAC, the plumbing and numerous other, uh, areas. Uh, under new business, uh, Mr. Torrey explained that ten percent of the request payment for hotter constructions are set aside for retainage and items that are, that are more than fifty percent completed, reduced to five percent retainage. Uh, that's pretty much what happened there. It should be noted, the New Franklin School is still part of this formula due to that's how the funding went through. Mr. Torrey stated that there's a small amount of work remaining at the New Franklin School. The original, uh, scope of services and risk frost, uh, proposal included focus on the exhaust fans serving the nineteen sixty-seven classroom, possibly retrofitting the nineteen eighty-four, uh, and which is ongoing at this time, at a total of seventeen thousand, six hundred dollars. Uh, Mr. Torrey also reported that June financial report is on target and within the scope of the budget. Uh, myself called a motion to authorizing the payment of manifest seventy-two, which was one, uh, million seventy-two thousand, five hundred and ninety-two dollars and seventy-three cents. Mr. Torrey explained that the new financial report design separates the main high school construction from the renovation project, thirty-six million dollars from the career construction renovation, which is four point five. This was a great, and I'm not going to go through the details of this, but Peter has had a challenge because we have to represent this so that we are properly paid on vocational dollars that are, uh, allotted to us from, um, Concord. And he's done an outstanding job. Actually, I believe there's a financial statement that you all may have received in the mail. I don't believe it's in your packets, but if you haven't, we will make sure. But there is a new sheet in balance which will, uh, extrapolate out the vocational part of this so that we are, um, reporting the proper dollars to the proper, uh, columns. Uh, and, uh, we had a sixty thousand for hazardous, uh, removal, which, uh, out of an account of a hundred and ninety thousand. And, uh, Mr. Torrey explained further that the cost had already paid, uh, two million, five hundred and ninety-one, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars for the Career Tech Center to be going on. And pretty much at, at, at one point, Bob Sullivan came in to explain again the reason to having to basically have two sets of books, why we have this construction regarding both the Career Center and the, uh, traditional high school. Uh, to do, most of the other stuff is informational, uh, and, uh, though Mr. Ifohler questioned Mr. Blaze as to when the JBC would have a guaranteed maximum price. Mr. Blaze indicated that he had just received final drawings, uh, back when this meeting was happening, but the guaranteed maximum price would remain under three point eight million as proposed in the preliminary budget. And again, we had a motion by myself for, to, to execute the new work at the Career Center not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars. And again, that's pretty much everything. Is there questions in regards that you can either ask Ann Walker, John Lyons or myself? Seeing none. We'll go to the next committee report that is not on tonight's agenda. The Athletic Committee Report, I'll, uh, hand it to Nancy Clayberg and Clay Hayward.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, on, uh, July ninth at about eleven AM, we, the, um, Athletic Committee had a meeting in Forrest's office. And, uh, we, one of the, um, topics that we talked about was the Parent Athletic Advisory Committee, uh, that is, uh, actually in the process of being formed. Letters have been sent out and, um, I urge anyone who has vested interests, which I mean, who has a child that plays, uh, athletics in our, um, school programs, um, please, um, fill these forms out and, and pass it into Forrest before the deadline. Um, I, I look forward to, uh, working with the parents and we have a lot of topics that we would like to discuss and work out and, and, um, I'm sure we could have a real strong athletic, um, committee here in Portsmouth.
Thank you, Clay. And again, I, I echo that. Uh, yes, Forrest, if you have to speak up to the mic, though.
Just to clarify and thank you, Mr. Hayward, uh, very well described. The letters will go out in our summer mailings, which should go out about the last week in July. I want people starting to check the mailbox going, they said they mailed them out and they didn't, so. Uh, they will go out with our regular summer mailing in about a week and a half.
Thank you, Forrest.
Thank you, Forrest.
Roseanne?
If an elementary, it would just be for high school parents, not the other levels of athletics to be involved in this?
Uh,
School parents will be involved?
Just high school parents, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Just high school parents.
Yes, Nancy.
I also want to thank our, um, Athletic Director, Mike McKinney, for being at that meeting and for being so helpful, um, with the committee. Thank you, Mike.
Okay. Any other committee reports to be given tonight to the Portsmouth School Board? Seeing none. Uh, any new business, Dr. Tracy, this evening?
None.
None to be brought forth? Under item eight, oh, continuing business, late start time at the Portsmouth High School, Dr. Tracy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, we agreed that at this meeting, um, we would come back with, um, some further study and, um, some suggestions and discussion topics regarding the latest start time at Portsmouth High School. And I've asked, um, Forrest Ransdale and John Stokel also to join me, um, in this discussion and, and hopefully, uh, involve you at this table also. When we left the, um, our last meeting, uh, when this was discussed, um, we were in agreement that, um, this would be very difficult to pull off for the oh-four, oh-five, uh, school year, obviously at this late time, but that we would seriously consider, uh, some changes for the oh-five, oh-six. And that's how we, um, went into our investigation. I want to tell you, uh, from the start that we really didn't need to gather, uh, lots of original information for our discussion. Uh, Adam Irish really did an outstanding job of providing us not only with the research, uh, but with the pros and cons and, and, uh, was very, uh, objective about, uh, looking at all aspects, including his surveys. That's why in your packet, uh, I have duplicated, um, Adam's handouts that he gave to you, uh, in May of, May twenty-fifth of oh-three and, um, uh, of oh, oh-four. And, um, and so I'd like to actually use those for the discussion. But I also included in your packet a memo from Peter Torrey because he was a big part of our discussion and we really asked him about, uh, the theoretical, uh, possibilities here as well as the, uh, what we could support in practice. So in the end, I think what you're going to have to decide, obviously, uh, not tonight, but at least at some future time, is, um, given the information that we have, what do we endorse theoretically in concept, as, as Adam Iris has, has asked the question? And what can we support in practice? And that's really, uh, what the question is going to come down to. Um, we're not here to debate the research. Uh, we certainly feel that kids who get more sleep, obviously are more active, more alert, and, uh, that increases learning for sure. And so we're not debating that. But what I'd like to do is take you through, uh, some of the facts that exist, following along with Peter Torrey's, uh, memo that he provided for you, um, and, and just highlight some of those, not to read them all, but just to set the stage. The high school provides student transportation by bus to students at a cost of twenty-five dollars a semester. As you know, the New Hampshire laws require us to, uh, transport all students up through grade eight. Um, the, uh, bus pickups for Portsmouth High School generally start, uh, about six forty-five AM and seven fifteen AM. And then the afternoon drop-offs are between two thirty-five and two fifty-five. That's kind of the, the window that we have to deal with and still, uh, meet our requirements of, uh, certain number of hours for teaching and learning. Um, and then, um, he's also listed here for you that there are twelve buses in the morning carrying high school and middle school students. There are seven buses in the afternoon carrying high school students only, and then we have one bus for pass. And then also, Mr. Torrey has listed for you the times, uh, the starting times for the different schools. We needed to put that into perspective to see how that was going to affect, um, each school as we made changes. If you continue on, uh, he lists for you that, um, we have a total of thirteen passenger buses to handle over one thousand students at the, uh, school. And each bus, um, each of the buses can be scheduled up to three trips each morning and each afternoon. And so that would be something we'd be working with. Um, it takes thirteen buses contracted for four hundred and eighty school days. Uh, that costs, uh, us thirty-five thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars for each bus. So that's the cost factor there, uh, too. And, um, so when we take a look at making changes here, um, he's also attached to a memo for you to read because this has been discussed in, in the past. But, uh, he's asked us to please note that after seven thirty AM and between nine fifteen AM, uh, for the high school now, it would require either, A, the length of the Portsmouth High School day be altered, B, the number of buses be increased, or C, other school times be changed or some combination of all three. I would also, and he's, and we have a sheet to look at, then we can kind of look at some of those possibilities. I would also add D, that, um, we would need to coordinate with SAU fifty and their whole bus transportation system because their system also is, uh, based on their linkage to their elementary and their middle school because they provide transportation also. If you look at the chart on, that Mr. Torrey has provided for the AM pickups and the PM pickups, uh, you will see that we have more flexibility in the morning to make adjustments because we have, uh, an hour and a half difference of time. And so there are, there are, uh, more possibilities for, uh, changing the times at, in the morning with the hour and a half difference without increasing buses. But in the afternoon, it gets very difficult because there's only an hour difference and that makes it very difficult. So if you go down through all of these, uh, and look at the AM times starting for later than, um, seven thirty, starting times now, and this is, is just for the high school here, you can see that, um, with the number of buses we have, we can accomplish much of those time adjustments. It's in the afternoon where we come It's in the afternoon where we come up short with up to seven additional buses, if we're going to continue to have the same number of teaching and learning minutes and hours that we have at this time. I'm going to ask John Stokel to just maybe attach on some of the other variables, not just the cost or the number of buses, but it was a few years ago that this was actually seriously considered, and even got to the point where, I guess, you got to some, a real close decision-making line of making this decision, and the public did weigh in on that. And John has that perspective, and maybe you could just talk about that variable, is how it does affect the public, because that's going to also be a big factor, we think.
Good evening. Approximately ten years ago, we looked at the possibilities of basically flip-flopping the elementary and the secondary, starting time and ending time. The thought was that the younger students at elementary were up anyways, and the adolescents wanted to sleep in, so therefore it may make sense to make that change. We looked at the research, and then we had a public forum for our parents. As a matter of fact, we had hosted that at the middle school. Approximately one hundred twenty-five to one hundred fifty parents came to that forum that evening, and we talked about what we were looking at, what the possibilities were, and there was not one parent there that evening who was in favor of always changing those times. So I would recommend that as we walk through this whole procedure, and maybe take a year to look at it, that we make sure we have the parents of our students involved in this process, because we might be creating something that the parents really are not in support of. I think there are some real issues in the afternoon with daycare. I think we know that many of our parents, both parents are working, or we have single-parent households, and many of them need the older adolescents home in the afternoon to be there when the youngsters get off from the elementary, from their bus runs. And I think that was a real issue ten years ago, and is probably still an issue now. So I would hope that as we look at this, that we have the parents involved early on for their input. Thank you.
Questions for John before he steps down?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yeah, John, thank you. How about the, their comments about the young children in the dark in the morning? What are their comments, whether besides, you know, having the older child at home for the students?
I think the comments, again, were the youngsters, the younger children at elementary, if they were going to begin to catch buses at quarter of seven or seven o'clock in the morning, that was an issue for parents. A lot of them had left for work, and they didn't want to, you know, have them out at bus stops alone at those early hours. They would have to be looking for people to help out in the neighborhoods with that. So that also was an issue with the earlier times for the kindergarten students through grade five, no question about it. And again, that was looking at flip-flopping all the starting times for elementary and secondary, because at that time, the same as now, it was a real issue on money to just change secondary time from adding the extra bus routes.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, if I might, I'd like to make a recommendation to the superintendent. I think John touched on the issue, and the parents' idea certainly is essential to this proposal. But I'd like to hear the pros and cons from all the elementary school principals, and perhaps John could jot down some of his things, as he remembered them from the last time. You know, what their pros and cons are, what would they, you know, what would be their final decision, based on the information they gathered, especially the elementary school? You know, that's a part of the equation, I think, that carries weight, the greater weight in the equation in my mind, rather than the idea that high school students, you know, can get two more hours' sleep. I don't think that's the, well, it is the issue, obviously, for the students, but I think that the younger children are the ones that are going to determine this equation and how it works out, depending on the parents, the parents for the younger children, and the principals of the three schools, and also John, the middle school superintendent and principal.
Thank you, Charlie. Ann Walker.
I remember that meeting well, John, and I was on the committee that did some of the research. And what I came away from that meeting with, it surprised me, there were a lot of middle school students there, and they were most vocal. They did not want to be switching. They wanted to keep it just the way it was, and their concern was sports. The parents hadn't been thinking in terms of the sports, what the kids were. And so when Adam gave us the survey that he did at the high school, I was very impressed with the fact that those kids were not feeling the way the middle school kids had some time back, and that they really seemed to very much want to be able to sleep in later and to be able to do a better job in school. And I would like to comment on what a great job Adam did with his research, because that's a lot of work.
Dr. Tracy, you want to continue?
Yes. I'm going to ask Mr. Ransdale to speak briefly, too, as to some of the effects at the high school, and from his experience, what work he's done, because I know he's given this some thought also, and then I'd like to get back to some of the, just the general benefits and ill effects, and then maybe set a course of action for us to continue. So Forrest, if you'd just maybe give us some comments from the high school's point of view.
As everybody's noted, I mean, the research on this subject can be read, you know, two different ways, and I don't think necessarily that there's benefit and there's, you know, there's discussion of the benefit. The things that we certainly will have to consider, you know, transportation is one of them. Well, I don't believe we can do this with shortening the school day. I think that takes us to sort of the opposite of the direction that we need to go, and in terms of, you know, enhancing the education of our students. However, in order to do this, it would mean, on the cost analysis on the other end, just from terms of time, will potentially translate into, you know, greater lost class time for those students who are involved in extracurricular activities, which have to take, you know, have to leave school, you know, at about between one thirty and two thirty at some point, if we've extended the day by half an hour or an hour. I was speaking with a teacher this afternoon, who, from, you know, the student's standpoint was, you know, was, thought it was a good idea, but she also very quick, was quick to point out that she was, would be very concerned that she would lose that instructional time, you know, an additional amount of instructional time for kids in the afternoon. So there are, you know, there are pros and cons. Can it be done? Yes. And I think it is something we should look at in terms of having a plan for, we want to do this, not, it's not as simple as just changing bell schedules. We have to look at, as you know, transportation, what the schedule does to families, what it does to activities, and, you know, frankly, what it does to the performance of our students. And that's, you know, that's got to be the largest weighing factor, absolutely. But there's going to be lots we can look at, and I think we should take the time to look at it. I'm not opposed to it. I think there is research out there that supports the move in that direction, but I think it needs to be a well-thought-out move. We've done some wonderful, I think, some pretty good public forum work on issues that have come up, where we've had parents come in, and I would suggest that we do something similar to what John has talked about, because that is a, you know, a stakeholder group we certainly need to hear from. And, you know, have the students do that as well, and maybe do a survey of the entire student body with some different options, rather than just, you know, yes, there's been questions, and good questions about, you know, sleep patterns and things like that, but rather put some concrete options down. If you do A, it means B, and is that something you would, you know, think is a good idea? So I would, I would head that direction, and I would certainly endorse us taking a look at this more fully as the next passage of time ensues, whether it be a month or a year. We're going to need to take a look in time to really coordinate something. So, you know, we're going to have to have a decision, my timeframe would be if we're going to do this for oh five, we really have to know by January of oh five, we need some significantly lead time to get the logistics worked out, if in fact, we're going to do this.
Thank you, Forrest. Questions for Forrest, before he sits down? No questions? Dr. Tracy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that what we have here is a good start in adding to Adam Iris's study and what he's given us, and we've got now more information about the practicalities of making this switch. And I agree with Mr. Vaughn, it's going to be time now to ask our educational leaders who also work through our teachers to now react to different scenarios that we might present to them. And then, of course, the board has got to react to certain scenarios, especially if it means additional cost of buses. And so we've got variables of additional buses, athletics, extracurricular activities, people who have work schedules, childcare, meetings after school. The one area that I want to just emphasize for you that was brought up in our last meeting was the obvious fact that many of our students want to start a later time, but they want to get out at the same time that they're getting out now. And that came across clearly in the surveys and the work that we've done and what we've heard. And I can tell you from this superintendent's point of view, that I will not recommend limiting teaching and learning in this school district by one minute, and that's because of the high standards that our teachers enjoy right now, and they pass on to the students, and we see the performance of that. And so that area is, would be a very, very difficult one for me. So as you can see with Mr. Torrey's chart, starting at eight o'clock in the morning, just a half hour, is going to now increase that release time to three o'clock, and so we're going to have schedules adjusted. And if we decide to do that, then, then we'll make that work. But to start at eight o'clock, or eight thirty, or nine, and still get out at two thirty, would be very, very difficult for me to endorse in any way whatsoever. And I think Mr. Ransdale has alluded to that same fact. I would bring your attention to Adam Iris's handout that's titled "The Later Start Question and Overview of the Issue." He's been very thorough and complete and comprehensive and objective in listing the benefits of a later start and the ill effects of a later start. I would ask you to use that as your guideline as you now think theoretically and in practice as to just where we need to go with this, and we will use this chart also in our discussions about this issue. And we'll continue to work at it, and we'll, we'll continue to report back to you. But as far as Adam's question is concerned, I think that certainly we can endorse the concept that kids are going to learn better if they have more sleep, if they're well-rested, and they come to school with some, some energy and some, and some sleep. So that's not an issue. Questions do you have?
Questions for the superintendent?
Yes. Quick comment. As a student at the high school, I would definitely like to say my enthusiastic support for the idea of a later start. I definitely personally feel I could benefit from it, and know that many of my fellow students could also benefit from it. And I just would like to say that I appreciate the efforts of the board to keep this on the table, and definitely appreciate the work of my predecessor, Adam Iris, who was very thorough in compiling this packet, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Other questions to the superintendent's comments? Well, two areas as this moves forward that I'd like to make sure that we look at. Under item number one and number two of Peter Torrey's, after the intro page, where the high school provides transportation, and number two, the current transportation of an average of a hundred and sixty students daily, which, you know, that greatly always concerns me, that we don't have students taking better utilization with the buses, and yet we're always having to worry about parking permits. But I know that we're waiting to hear back from Mr. Burke here at City Hall in regards to parking and roadways. So I would hope that we could sort of coordinate that discussion within that to see if there's not a tie-in between that. So I'm not sure where Mr. Burke is coming, and what he wants to actually propose, but, you know, if there were, you know, looking at it the other side, if there would be possibilities of cost savings if he has some miracle answers, well, maybe there is not a tie-in, but I know that's coming. The second one also that I have is under item number nine that Mr. Torrey has, the one that sort of concerns me with the different bargaining unions that we have in, and I think Peter does a pretty good job with A, B, and C, but I think we need to take into consideration that each, each one of our bargaining unions then would have to alter their days, meaning that lunches would be probably an hour to, you know, maybe an hour and a half differently. Our second custodians would come in later, our first custodians would come in later, and then also with even in the teacher's contract, where there could be a scenario that we would either lengthen the day, and I agree with you, I do not want to see any minutes ever shaved off the day because we squeeze as much as possible out of it. But those are the two concerns, as I reviewed this, that I would like to make sure we're not overstepping certain union contracts, and again, within the parking and the riding to school, there might be some concerns there that we could work together with.
We'll look into that.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions, we remove to item eight D, and that also is not on tonight's. As we know, Diane McGee stepped down from being the employee rep to the school board. I am going to look for a motion tonight from the board to have letters go out to the different bargaining unions within the Portsmouth School District to ask for a representative. So it asks that to be a motion given from a board member to empower the superintendent to send out employee rep applications to each one of the unions to be returned, to have these go out no later than Thursday this week, and that if there is anybody with interest in it, that they have till next Friday to return those.
If I could make the motion that you just said?
Yes.
You may shorten it.
You may shorten it.
All right. I would request that the superintendent send a letter to all unions and, what's the other name? Cooperatives?
Associations.
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 Associations for applications to apply for a position, to, yes, seek a position on the school board.
Was that short?
Second. I was hoping for words.
It's been moved in second to discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passage unanimously. That brings us to item nine under financial. Dr. Tracy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have included in your packet the pro forma schedule that Peter Torrey did prepare for us, and considering both options that were before us as far as the cuts to our budget, option A and option B, we now know that option A is the one that we have to pay attention to, which means that from our original budget, we must deduct services that amount to one hundred and sixty-one thousand, three hundred and thirty-one dollars. We, at our last meeting, started to deliberate at some extent as to where those cuts would fall, and use this as kind of our talking framework. In fact, the board did authorize me to at least discuss possible consulting services for technology, given that in this scenario, we eliminated the technology director's position in dollars only, obviously, and then added in twenty-four thousand dollars for some kind of services, the department head services. I have included in your packet some of those technology assistance services that are going to be required this next year if we do not have a technology director. However, I need to tell you that I did not enter into consulting services with anyone. After some thought, it occurred to me that as a board, we really had not had our usual discussion as to which cuts would be in place and which ones would not. And I did not want to assume, as the superintendent, that we were actually eliminating the technology director's position, even though we had it on as a possibility. But I did include the, the services that we need. I do have that list for the public also, if they need that, and these are some services that we're going to have. that we're going to have to either consult with or have somebody within the system provide at some point. But I'm wondering if maybe we could have at least a brief discussion so that we could get started on which deductions we are gonna endorse and which programs stay. I have some ideas that I'd like to present to you, and then hopefully you'll have some also, but I think there is some flexibility here. For instance, I am going to recommend to this board that we retain the $35,000 that's dedicated to the foreign language program at the elementary school. That's one area that, after cutting $131,000 from that particular program, this will give us part-time services, but we've certainly had some representation and some testimony from parents that they wanna see that continue. We will need some kind of technology services. I'm not sure exactly what we can do in-house. I need to talk with the principals and certainly with Forrest Ransdale about how we might be able to meet those needs. So, maybe we could have a discussion. I had originally endorsed the idea that we would have a security person at the high school. Certainly, this is not the time to cut custodial services. So, my recommendation would be that we keep the full-time custodial position, maybe delay the security position until the, to January or at least the first of the year. Those are a couple of things that I was thinking about. Other than that, we really need to start talking about enrollments for our kids, what's happening at the high school, and what are the staffing positions that we really need. Our positions are, our programs are definitely up in art, and we have the numbers there. They're up in social studies, and we need staff for that. But with that, at least introduction, where do you see us going with this cut of $161,000?
What I'd like to do, and I make a recommendation, that we take the four recommendations that Dr. Tracy just had, in the order, I'll open it for general discussion, but then we'll get right into, first being the foreign language, next being custodial, next being security, and lastly being the technology. Mr. Vaughn?
Yeah, I just wanted for clarification on that B, on the security and custodian or custodian, so if it's both, does that increase it to about $36,000?
No. What we did there was, we actually put an option in there in one line. We're either going to have the delay the security for January or cut the custodial to a half position. Either one of those choices would result in $18,000. What I would recommend is we keep the custodial position at 1.0 and not .5 and delay the security, and that would be the same amount of money.
Okay, well, I second that thing. You can't make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Nope, I didn't make a motion.
You suggested that somebody make a motion?
I suggested that we go down the line of what he, what the superintendent, in no certain order.
All right. Well, I'll make a motion that the board agree to the recommendations made by the superintendent of the $35,000, and I'm glad he selected that. I was thinking the better my way over here, the foreign language class, and that the, either custodian or security, whichever the superintendent thinks is appropriate on being part of the motion, I make that part.
Why don't we take the first one that way for the general discussion, the $35,000? We'll take the first part of your motion, $35,000 for the foreign language. John Lyons?
Somebody needs to suck, I don't understand.
There we go.
Are you moving that it be deleted or maintained?
Maintained.
Maintain.
So, there's a recommendation, or there is a motion from Mr. Vaughn and second from Ann Walker to retain $35,000 for the elementary foreign language classes. John?
Might I ask the maker, the chairman and the maker of the motion, do we need to do it? Is, if there is a consensus of the board to accept the proposal that the superintendent has made under option A, do we need to address each one individually?
I think because we have been in a financial issue of this year, that the board, for the record, so that the general public would know, that if we take all four, that they know where each individual would stand on that. I think it might be prudent, again, I mean, may probably come out all the same, but I'm not gonna read nine minds or eight minds. I can't even read my moans some nights. So, my feeling is, is that if we do that, it probably may come out the same, John, but I am not sure.
All right. Well, I'm gonna certainly support Mr. Vaughn and support the full suggestions made in option A, so I won't address them as we hit each one individually, including the, excuse me, the consulting fee request as contained under option A on the pro forma schedule.
And John, just also for clarification for your question on that, as we do this, Nancy and I, when we met today, will subtract out the amount so people will realize what we're down to, because then you, you know, the board gets down to making some very hard choices, especially on the tech side, when we get down under that $100,000. So, right now, we have $35,000 being subtracted from $161,331, which will bring us to $126,331.
$126,331?
Yeah.
$126,331.
$126,331.
Is that right?
Yep. We're taking $35,000.
Well, no, we're not doing, we're...
$35 is already in there. I just wanted to make sure that...
Well, we only have a total of 100, the difference is, yeah, go ahead.
Let me just clarify, now, I didn't wanna confuse you with the Spanish decision, but that has been under discussion. The $35,000 is not a part of the $161,000, but I just wanted to get the consensus of the board and at least check in with you for your approval on keeping that $35,000 within the budget.
Okay, because it's in the other line, the 145.
So, it won't come into play in the $161,000. But I, and also, just to address Mr. Lyons's concern, and I think he's got a good point here, the reason I mention all of these individually is not necessarily that you have to count votes on every single one of them, but just to put it on the table so that board members have an opportunity to object or support these individual recommendations, because this is the time now to really state your preferences on any of these items. And that's, and if there are no objections to any of them, then we'll move on them. But we really do need to declare at this point where we are on a lot of the individual items.
Okay. So, the motion on the table is to retain the foreign language classes is in the elementary for $35,000. Yeah, Mr. Vaughn, I'll go with Ann first and then back to you, Charlie.
I just had a question, whether or not the elementary principals had had a chance to discuss the possibility of how they could deal with that amount of money since it's so much significantly less than previously.
We haven't designed any schedule until there's gonna be a decision on it, but the elementary principals are ready to meet with me and come up with a schedule. If that's our wishes, they will come up with a schedule that meets the needs of this part-time position.
Thank you.
Charlie?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I wasn't quite sure what my good colleague to my right, Attorney Lyons, was saying, but I had a hint that he might be thinking of, why don't we just pass a motion to allow the superintendent to make the decisions? I mean, who's going to quibble with him over what decision he makes about $161,331? That's what we have to deal with. That's what, that's what we have to cut. I mean, from needed to get into the machinations of whether we're gonna have this or we're gonna have that, I don't know if that's my job. That's his responsibility. But let me clarify, in my mind, if I might, I'm somewhat confused, that $35,000 is already in the budget.
Mm-hmm.
Is that correct? It's already in the budget. But it wasn't cut. It wasn't included in the $161,331.
Right.
Right. So, I really agree with my good colleague.
Thank you, Charlie.
So, and you know, I don't, I don't know why you're drawing this, dragging this out.
Well, I may differ, and I agree in that the superintendent should be doing that, but we're gonna get to the point, and one area that I stand strong on is that somehow we need to retain the administrative position of technology.
Oh, all right.
And that's...
That's your prerogative.
And when we get to, when we get to that, we need to make sure, because one year absence of an athletic director has caused this great frustration. I can see the same thing, especially with the excellent write-up we finally got tonight on the Portsmouth School Department Technology Assistance here of what happens. There's, you know, a lot there that if we, if we were to just refund that one program, a great deal of money would be missing. And that's, I think, my heartburn on this. I have no problem in regards to the remainder of the funding and how we do it, because that's how it's done during the budgetary session. It may be certain areas that other people, now, somebody may have something to do with the security officer or any other area. But again, if the wish of the board is to take the full one, allowing the $161, at the discretion of the superintendent, so be it.
Mr. Chairman?
Mm-hmm.
Maybe we can split it up, and if I might make the first motion to...
We have a motion on the table, so I have to have it...
I'm sorry, I forgot. I forgot.
The maker of the motion and the second, or have to agree to take it off?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I'll take the motion. You know, I, well, Chris is second, you're in the second. I would give all my motion.
Second or agree?
I will agree.
Okay, thank you.
Then why not, maybe if we split this in two, and I would make a motion to approve the pro forma reductions contained in item B titled "From Additional Budget Impact," which totals $33,256.
Total you have is what? Oh, okay, that, okay, retain, okay, I appreciate, yep.
And that's my motion.
Second? Moved in seconded. Discussion in regards to the motion, which would bring us to the $33,256.
I'm not quite sure, Mr. Chairman, if I might...
If, 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 as...
John, go ahead and explain.
If I may, as I see what the superintendent is suggesting, the left, we have an option A and an option B, and we know that we're dealing with option A because the operating budget only needs to be reduced by a half a percent, plus the additional reduction we had to make from our initial proposal, so that we need to reduce under option A $161,331.
Right.
That's set across from item A. The suggestion by the superintendent to reach the $161,331 under column A first contains some items under section B, which totals $33,256. So, my motion deals with those items first, and I left out the items under C as respect for our chairman, because he has a question about the technology director. So, I tried to take B as a group first.
I understand. Thank you for the clarification, Attorney Lyons.
Ann Walker and...
This is discussion on his motion. I would prefer to keep the library lunch computer monitor at the high school so that students having 45-minute lunch would have access to the computers. That was discussed at length, and I would like to see that left in.
I know, I know.
That was actually what I was hoping to comment on as well, is the library lunch computer monitor for the high school, because as that is the only time when students can use the computer labs at the school, I think that's relatively important on at least most students' agendas.
Lionel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's not to imply that we are going to eliminate that service, but we felt that we could eliminate the $2,500 that's in the budget and find a way to provide for that service anyway. So, it is, so it does not imply that we're gonna delete that service, just the $2,500 that's in the budget for that. We definitely took that seriously, and that was Adam's suggestion, and we do wanna provide to that service. So, it's a good clarification, but I do think we can cut the 2,500, though.
Other discussion. Seeing none, it's been moved in seconded for the reduction under option A with the B section of $33,256. Now, further discussion, this is financial in nature, so it'll be roll call. Nancy Novlin Claybird?
Yes.
Clay Haywood?
Yes.
John Lyons?
Yes.
Charles Vaughn?
Yep.
Ann Walker?
Yes.
Roseanne Vazella Clark?
Yes.
Kent LaPage?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, just to continue the process, I've now moved for the additional reduction under option A to achieve the goal of $161,331. Those items set out in section C, which totals $128,075.
It's moved in seconded. Is it seconded? I mean, is it seconded?
Yep. Yes.
Mr. Vaughn, a second, I apologize. Moved in seconded, open for discussion.
I have a question.
Nancy?
Now, this, it deletes the full-time technical director, but it puts in $24,000 for part-time services, correct?
Mm-hmm. I cannot support it. As I look at what we have for technology assistance in the plan that was given to us, and what we had in the past, especially when I get down to creating the master schedule, I see a number of functions of this job that at $24,000, without further background of what we need to do properly, because this has become a vital part of the school, and when you go to other schools, is also one. And I am great concerned that, I'm not sure where we stand with our principals, and I understand, as Dr. Tracy has said, that, you know, people are gonna have to do, you know, more with less, but this is one less that I strongly oppose and state that we now will have lost two administrative positions, and that's not always a bad thing in life, but we will have lost two full-time administrative positions within the Portsmouth School District in two years. And it's a very slippery slope, especially one that has a functionality of dealing with the master schedule and a high investment product that we have, which is all the computers within the school. John?
One just strict financial note is that it's not a dollar-for-dollar loss, because the salary that we're cutting includes salary and benefits. So, when you bring in somebody who's consulting, you still may get some significant hours, but because they are a consultant, this district is no longer obligated to pay their benefits and other items that are included in their salary. So, it's really a wonderful way for us to save some money and still have that service provided. Certainly, you know, we've had continuing discussions over the athletic director and some of these other positions. We don't really wanna lose any of them, but we have to think outside the box, and I think that's what the superintendent has done here. I also think that with the high quality of the teachers we have in the classroom, with the principals we have in our buildings, with the administration, they've just gotta find a way to make this work. And if this is the suggestion that's being made by the superintendent to be able to bridge this gap, I just feel that it's a solution that is there and, again, does not affect direct instruction to children.
Other discussion. Ann?
I think in terms of the master schedule, I think that there are very qualified people within the school system who could learn to do this, either with the help of the consultant, whoever, and I would like to see that opportunity. I like the idea of the consultants. One or more? One or more?
Well, again, I'm going to toe in, it, you know, being from the private practice, I've seen this going, this outsourcing of jobs, and it's one that you can end up with your consultant utilizing offshore locations, most recently, India is probably the highest area when it comes to computer-type stuff, and that can be, if you use a consultant, we have no control over how he or she would then be able to operate on certain platforms and getting the services online. So, again, I don't know where or how, we do have from us tonight, given of the breakdown of different days and so forth, but I go with this very cautiously, because it's, we have a very high, and we have built this program up, Ed had done an excellent job in building this program up, and it was a tireless job of an individual, where if I add up, you know, just a few of the number of days here, we're nowhere near what a administrator was there. An administrator was there, I believe, over the hundred and eighty-three days, and I believe it was actually about a two-twenty, two-twenty-four day type contract with that administrator. Ann?
I did not have any outsourcing in mind, because that's a, that's a big no-no, as far as I'm concerned.
That's where you can go with it.
I really would much prefer to have someone in system, and I think there are people who could do it.
But if we use a consultant, Ann, for the twenty-four thousand-
If a particular consultant was helping them to learn.
That's not what this is. That is not-
That much stay with in-house.
That is not necessarily what this could be. Outsourcing is something that I am well aware of in the private sector. Charlie?
I don't think our superintendent is going to go to Bangalore, India, to get his consultant, so.
That's not, that's not what I'm stating, Charlie. What I am stating, is that once you hire a consultant, that consultant, as they work with the product, when they cannot be backed up for services to be rendered for computer programming, or whatever the issue is, is that we don't know how that would work, and again, we're saying we're going to take, and, John, I agree, I always believe that we think outside the box, and ninety-two thousand dollars minus, you know, with the benefits in there, we're still talking about a better of a seventy-four thousand dollar job, once you take out the benefits, easily, seventy-four, maybe closer to eighty thousand dollars, that we're going to say, we're going to be able to do for twenty-four thousand dollars, and we've already done it with one administrative position, and have suffered some consequences, so, again, that's just my opinion, anyway. Nancy?
I, I guess my question is, if we keep this full-time position, then what else are we going to cut to make the one sixty-one, three thirty-one? I, I guess that would influence my decision, is what, what would, what would we cut to make up for that?
And that is the discussion, that I think, you know, is there, I agree. I mean, also, one that I have great heartburn, as many know, is we still are not going to be fair to Little Harbor School. We are going to have still a half-functioning facility of a gymnasium, because we cannot come up with forty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars. I mean, that gym, that wall has now been three years in that manner, and these are ones that I believe we could table and allow further discussion, to see if we can't be more creative. I mean, it's, it is, John, as you say, the one twenty-eight, seventy-five, and that is not much when you look at a budget of the size of the Portsmouth School Board, of the Portsmouth School System, but those are two things that I have taken into consideration in this whole thing. I had no problem with the B portion of this, I agree with that, but when we get down to these, these are long-term effects on student outcome, I believe, especially that wall.
Mr. Chairman, could we move the question, I, you know, I think it, your points are well-taken, but, you know, it's with fear and trembling, that I look at this, one hundred and sixty-one thousand, three thirty-one, and then I'm thinking of the three hundred million dollar shortfall that our budget has, and what's going to happen next year, and, you know, if there was some sunshine on the horizon, I would, you know, be inclined to agree with you, but I don't think we're going to, that things are going to get any better.
And I agree with that.
My half glass of water is half-empty, because of my age, but, I, I'm going to vote for the motion.
Okay. It is financial of nature? Roll call.
Would you clarify the motion?
The motion is to take, under option A, section C of option A, which would reduce us an additional one hundred and twenty-eight, with a motion that just passed of thirty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty-six, reducing the budget to one sixty-one, three hundred and thirty-one dollars, so the two combined would be able to do that.
Can I ask one more question? Mr. Superintendent, you support option C, correct? I mean, can you give us your professional opinion of this?
Probably not in twenty-five words or less, but I, I'm just listening to you and feeling the same agony that I've felt in this last year, when we had to come in with a zero percent, and that is, we want to retain the high standards and the services that we have in the school department, but the fact of the matter is, that the money isn't there to support it, and so we have to make some very difficult choices. It's not my choice not to have a full-time athletic director at the high school, it's not my choice that we had to cut two full-time business education teachers and the art director, and now we're, we're reducing a great leadership position as a technology director, and all the benefits of that, but where do we go from here? I feel equally as passionate about supporting Little Harbor with their, with their wall replacement, as our chairman does, and I try to point to what impacts teaching and learning, and what goes on in the classroom, but I can tell you, at that school, that not replacing that wall is going to impact teaching and learning in a, in a big way, but where do we go from here? We don't have that many choices, and so my professional opinion is, let's find more money and, and keep the standards that, that we're used to in Portsmouth, but until we do get the money, we've got to make some tough choices, and that's really what we've just gone through at this time, so I, I don't know any other way to go with it.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Regarding the motion to support the one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, oh, seventy-five, which is contained in option C, section C of the sheet, what is your pleasure? Clay Hayward?
Yes.
John Lyons?
Yes.
Charles Vaughn?
Yes.
Ann Walker?
Yes.
Roseanne Vazella Clark?
Yes.
Nancy Novlin Claybird?
Yes.
Kent LaPage?
No.
That's our chairman?
Yes.
You provided us with an interesting article about the business community down in Florida, contributing some money to purchase a home for a superintendent. I would like this school board to consider, perhaps, putting a program together involving the business community, to get this wall built that we've been talking about. I think there is a creative opportunity here, I don't know if we can use one of the subcommittees that this school board has created, we've been talking about this wall, it's an amount of money that this community can raise, can do, and I think we need to begin to think about it. I'm not asking for action tonight, I'm just asking for folks to think about that, and let's perhaps get some action planned together, so we can get this thing built.
Thank you, John, I agree. At this time, we have items for the next agenda, if you have anything, please get them to either Patty or myself, we're looking to, for that, and also, is there any other business at this time to be brought forth to the Portsmouth School Board? I do have one item that I'd like to bring up today, is a very special day in regards to an individual on our board who puts up with a lot, and we have a small birthday cake to celebrate Patty's eighteenth birthday.
(laughing) Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Patty. Happy birthday to you.
And with that, is there a motion to adjourn and enjoy the cake? So moved.
Moved.
Moved in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned.
Better than that. Not going to be in here.
John, you want a piece of cake?
(inaudible)